Good evening and welcome to the November 17th, 2021 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Um, Chris, oh, wow. Michelle? I'm sorry. It's been a long week. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
Ellen Wolfman-McLeod.
Here.
Ellen Wolfman-McLeod. Dennis T. Marsha. Norman Lewis. Dr. Fauci, Dr. Pacheco, Dr. Pacheco.
Here.
Robert C. Bellinger.
Here.
Lindsey Wolfert.
Yeah.
Please fill the fire at six p.m. with my right.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have a teacher personnel matter, an administrative personnel matter, and a contractual matter to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, we are recessed. Thank you. Do I have a motion to reopen the November 17th, 2021 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
Ellen Wolfman-McLeod.
Here.
Ellen Wolfman-McLeod. Dennis T. Marsha. Norman Lewis. Dr. Fauci, Dr. Pacheco.
Here.
Robert C. Bellinger.
Here.
Lindsey Wolfert.
Yeah.
Please fill the fire at six p.m. with my right.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you very much. We have one set of minutes to accept. Those are the minutes from the November 3rd, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Thank you very much. There is now an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. If you would like to address the board, please approach the podium. Please state your name clearly so we can note it for the minutes.
I'd like to start out with the 2008 study of the Spanish flu pandemic that Dr. Fauci did. He basically said, in essence, the virus landed the first blow while the bacteria delivered the knockout punch. Ninety percent of the people from the Spanish flu pandemic died of bacterial pneumonia, had nothing to do with the virus. How these masks are affecting our kids. Masks were not mentioned in the preparation for future pandemics from that study. Increases average carbon dioxide levels inhaled two to three times the government limit for classroom air quality. Leads to headaches, drowsiness, fatigue, impairs cognitive ability and concentration, impairs psychomotor skills, increases dizziness, listlessness, leading to accidents. Most effects are measured in trained athletes in under one hour. Decreases blood oxygen level saturation. Fight or flight risk response results in anxiety, increases panic attacks, creates breeding grounds for bacteria, fungus compounded with the contaminated hands, prevents normal interaction, impairs quality of speech, erases positive effects on smiles and laughter, disrupts nonverbal communication with loss of facial expression, increases feelings of insecurity, discouragement, numbness, and isolation. Dr. Robert Malone, the inventor of the mRNA technology, is quoted as saying, "This is the largest experiment performed on human beings in the history of the world, and several decades have not gotten past phase three in animal trials using the mRNA technology in a vaccine for respiratory viruses." The FDA supposedly approved the Pfizer. What they actually did was approve something called Comirnaty, which doesn't exist, and said that it's interchangeable with the Pfizer vaccine. Excuse me. One of the main objectives of this is basically there will be no recourse for any kind of vaccine adverse reactions. Through November 5th of this year, VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Event Recording System, reported 1,720,302 reports of vaccine injury. 18,461 vaccine-reported deaths, 27,543 total reported deaths, 91,982 COVID vaccine-reported hospitalizations, 171,697 total reported hospitalizations. VAERS is a voluntary reporting system. It takes about 20 minutes to input one event by a doctor, and they say that basically 1% of the actual vaccine injuries are reported in VAERS. So you can basically add two zeros to all the numbers that I just read. I had COVID early in 2020, had an antibody test six to eight weeks ago. I have four and a half times the amount of antibodies to be considered naturally immune, which everyone seems to ignore. And since that time, I haven't been sick. I've had zero problems. If you really cared about these kids, their health and well-being, you'd remove the mask, you'd be promoting nutrition, supplements, vitamins, minerals, regular exercise, and under no circumstances would you mandate an experimental vaccine. Definition of a vaccine was changed in 2021. Merriam-Webster's dictionary removed "provided immunity" from it and changed it to "protected" mandate. A mandate, the legal definition, is a judicial command, order, or precept written or oral from a court, not a president. A court. I was educated in this system. We have the legislative, we have the judicial, and we have the executive branch. There's a reason we have separation of powers, and they seem to be being ignored, and everyone here is complicit with that ignorance, and it's really sad. It's really sad. I really hope if this somehow, this vaccine gets mandated somehow, that you guys do something. I'm starting to see that this has nothing to do with a virus, and it has to do with money and control. And everybody's got a choice. I choose not to wear a mask. That's my choice. We live in a constitutional republic. We have constitutional rights, and they're being trampled on, and no one seems to be doing anything about it. And the children, the kids, they're the future. Without them... So if you really, really care about these kids, you'll take these masks off, and under no circumstances will you mandate a vaccine. Thank you.
I'm here tonight, number one, to echo what the gentleman behind me said. It is so beyond the time to take these masks off, these kids. As you know, I've come to these meetings for over a year now, begging for these masks to go off, but I just think it's really gotten to a point now, and I know that Dr. Wall, you're helping to write a letter with the rest of the superintendents to finally get some guidance from the state. And it is the state government that I blame for this, because they are the ones that put this mandate down to you guys, and you didn't have a choice in the matter. But we really, really need your support to help get these masks off, and also allow our community to make the decision as parents whether we want to vaccinate our children. And hopefully, there'll be, you know, a percentage large enough for herd immunity so the parents who don't feel comfortable doing it won't be forced to. On a smaller note, but I think almost equally as important, I'm a glutton for punishment and volunteered to be all-three-kids class mom this year, in the hopes of getting access to come into the school, because it's very odd that us as parents of elementary school kids have not had access to these buildings for 18 months now. And I just want to know, where is there a rule that says that if the teachers and the students can be in the building with masks on, why can't we as class moms or other parents that want to volunteer for the Thanksgiving celebration or the Christmas celebration? Why are we not getting access to the school? I was very happy to see that we are going to get to do in-person conferences, so thank you for doing that. But I do think that it's just yet another disconnect for our children, that they don't get to see their parents or other people's parents. Like, I teach religion, and I have this great rapport with my little, you know, group of 15 kids in my religion class, and I think they miss seeing other people's parents, and they miss seeing their own parents in school. So I would beg of you, if you can't get it done by Thanksgiving next week, at the very least, let's start to think about allowing parents to come back in and be part of their young children's lives in the school. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tara Felice. I have two children in seventh grade and ninth grade. I feel very fortunate because my children are older, and the best part of, you know, my parenting was coming to the school. So I really feel for these moms with young kids and dads that can't come to the school. So I just wanted to say that. But what I really wanted to ask was, with the bill that is out right now to mandate COVID vaccines, I'm just curious if you are able to let us know the percentage of our school community that is vaccinated, the children, and I don't know if the teachers are included in that number, in order to, you know, advocate to not have mandates and masks and all of that. The state was at 88% before they opened it up for the children, and now I believe we're at 75%. I don't have the data on the other 25%, but I'm assuming many of that, much of the 25% already had COVID. But I wanted to know if you guys were able to let us know what our percentage is, and how often you get that information, or if you can get that information, and how that's related to the state and so on, and what's the progress on that as far as mandates, and if that's even a consideration. That's it. Thank you.
Joe Pandisio. I have two children in the district at Harrison Avenue, fifth grade and first grade. I know a couple of weeks ago, I stood up here and, you know, voiced my opinion, and to follow up, I know, Dr. Wall, you had mentioned about metrics and numbers and whatnot, and I know there's rumblings about the... I know you wrote the letter to the state and whatnot, which, thank you for that, and shows that, you know, we're trying to move forward, and then, you know, I know, as you had mentioned, there's a lot going on, and, you know, we're all being kind of controlled one way or another. I know you mentioned about if it's a law, you know, you can't fight the law. Understand that, respect that, and I also understand, as you had mentioned, that you have 3,200 kids in the district, not one, not two, not three, like some of us. So I understand, you know, the angles, you know, everything coming at you in many different ways, and I appreciate your support in trying to do what you can do for us in our community. So my question is, you had reached about, talked about the metrics last couple of weeks ago. So as Mrs. Felice had mentioned, where are we at with those numbers? We'd like to know where we're looking at, so this way we know, moving forward, what we're looking at. There was also someone here a few weeks ago that mentioned about, what's the solution if kids are forced to be vaccinated, and we choose to keep them home? How are you going to educate our kids at home? If so, if that's still something that's going to, you know, divide our community and the students within, and our parents, as parents, we choose to keep our children home, where are we going to be with that if it comes down to it? You know, how's that going to work out? Because it becomes an emotional and mental state of mind for the children, you know, that all of a sudden, they're thinking we're moving forward again, and then all of a sudden, if we explain to them that, well, you can't go back to school, and they're going to be like, well, why not? You know, I don't have to tell, you know, I don't want to have to tell my first grader that, well, you're not vaccinated, and Jane and Mary and Bobby are, and, you know, you can't play with them, or you're not allowed to because someone made that decision for them, which I don't think is fair. And I think there's a lot of support behind me here tonight, not as much as we would anticipate, but I know you're hearing it probably via email and phone calls on a daily basis. So just those few questions, you know, hopefully you could touch on again tonight in regards to how far we're moving forward if we're not, if we're moving back, whatever the case may be, but, you know, we would appreciate some sort of guidance there, and, you know, I don't know if I can speak for everyone else here that is against the mandate and whatnot, but I plan on showing up for the rest of these meetings until something's done, one way or another, so, thank you.
My name is Laura Hirsch. This is my first time speaking here, so I'm sorry if I sound a little nervous. I have three boys in the school district. Two are at Harrison Avenue School, and one is at LMK. And before I go on, I want to preface my comments by saying that I'm not a doctor, and I do not work in the medical field. So for that reason, I turned to professionals for advice on what to do regarding this topic. And who happens to be a professional is my kid's grandfather. He has a 40-year career in infectious diseases and epidemiology. He has global experience helping to get under control and eradicate infectious diseases. My kid's grandfather was one of the leading doctors who led research and advocated for the booster for measles in the USA, a shot that is now required for public school. There are many mandatory vaccines that our kids have to take in order to come to school, and I know several families who have unfortunately had to leave New York State because they weren't ready to vaccinate their kids. I asked my kid's grandfather for research-based data to make my decision. No one wants to vaccinate their kids. I certainly didn't, but we've come to a point now where we have to make a decision about this. My kid's grandfather made his decision based on research, and he believes the vaccine is safe for his grandkids. Based on the most intense safety monitoring program, the risk of adverse events following vaccine are minuscule compared to those following the infection with COVID-19. That is a fact. Over 700 children, 19 years and under, have died from COVID-19 in the USA, and that unfortunately is also a fact. Herd immunity is meant to protect community members who cannot get the vaccines due to medical conditions such as cancer. The vaccine will help stop variants and reduce the virus's chance to mutate. We all know the virus transmits very easily amongst unvaccinated people, giving new variants a chance to emerge. So today, I actually did bring my two younger children to get vaccinated today. My other one was already vaccinated. I also want to bring the attention to the beginning of the pandemic when Italy went into their first lockdown, and everybody here in the United States thought, wow, they're really going overboard. They're going too far. This is really ridiculous. And then, look what happened. Over 2020, the whole world was shut down. Now Austria has locked down anyone who is unvaccinated, and it seems that Germany may be right behind them. So are they going too far? I also want to add...
Excuse me, please. Please give respect to each of the speakers. No one, no one else has been interrupted. Please allow every speaker to speak without interruption.
I too hate the mask. I really do, but I do believe that the only path to removing the masks is to vaccinate. I also wanted to add a different point of view here. From what I understand, the Board of Education has to follow whatever is recommended by, whether it be the NIH, the CDC, the Board of Health, New York State, and so on. The Board of Education are educators. We entrust them when it comes to our children's education and keeping them safe while in school. That's why they work with the Police Department on active shooter drills and the Fire Department for fire drills, because they are experts when it comes to safety concerns. When it comes to keeping our children safe from disease and infections, the school system has to turn to the doctors and researchers who understand the science. Parents who have issues should think about maybe taking up these questions with the people who are actually making the decisions on the mandate and the vaccine. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to bring to attention the reason why everybody is here.
You state your name for the record, please.
My name is Nico Marino. The reason why everybody's here, and it's like, the reason why everybody's gathering with these school board meetings, is really not going against anything but the mask, but just to have some choice, and parental choice. So she chooses to believe that kind of information, and, you know, really, in this whole pandemic, we shouldn't be going after the people that are making these choices. Whether it's the choice on one side or choice on the other, it really doesn't matter. It's actually the people that are feeding us the information. So we've been fed false information for over a year and a half, okay? We are seeing truths come out in the last couple of months, weeks, days, whistleblowers, people that made the actual mRNA, the creator of it, what their truths are. So we're not fighting here against them or for them or anything. We just want the choice to be ours, not theirs, not the people that are feeding us these lies. We want it to be our choice. We had the kids, we could make the choice for the kids. That's it.
Hello, my name is Gabby Milletti, and all I want to say is, I just want to thank everybody for the hard work that you guys have been doing, because I can't imagine having to run five schools during this disaster of a time. And I know your jobs are incredibly difficult, and I want to give you guys a lot of credit from the testing, and I know you're trying to accommodate as many parents as possible, and for that I say thank you. But I also can't oppress it upon you enough to please listen to the parents, listen to both sides. Those who choose to vaccinate their kids, God bless them. Let them do what they feel is right for their child. However, if you on the other side, okay, and you have valid reasons why you do not want to vaccinate your child, you shouldn't be vilified, number one, and the child should not be discriminated against. My fear, my fear is that those who are vaccinated, the mask can come off. Those who are not vaccinated, you have to wear this piece of cloth that has proven to be nothing, okay? It's whatever. But what I'm saying is, there should not be discrimination and vilification for those who don't comply with the mandate. We are all adults here. We should be able to have thorough conversations and debate and be practical, because not all socks fit the same-sized feet. We all parent our kids differently. So if you want to vaccinate your kids, God bless you. I don't think any less of you because you do, but I ask that you think the same of me, because you don't know what my history is with vaccine injury or religious beliefs or whatnot. I don't want to be vilified for not complying, because I have valid reasons if that's what I choose. So all I'm asking is that the debate be heard, and that people can stand up for what they believe in ways that we can all get along in this. We are one community, and we have to learn to stand together here, because we know you guys are busting your humps, trying to accommodate as many people as possible with the testing and this and that. We're grateful for it, but we, those who of us who will not comply with any vaccine mandate, should absolutely not be vilified. I'm getting tired of it. I... All we are guilty of is loving and wanting to protect our children, the same way vaccinated parents want to protect their children, but it's just in a different way. So that's all. Thanks, guys.
I live in Harrison. I did not prepare for this. I have a terrible accent, so this is really difficult for me. I'm shocked. I'm shocked what that lady said. She has the right to vaccinated children, she has the right to do whatever she wants, but just the fact that this person mentioned what's happening in Germany and in Austria, it's a terrible thing. This is the United States of America. I live in three different countries. I came to America to have the American dream, because here is the pursuit of happiness. Here, we can be free, we can work, we can have, we can do whatever we want to do, and nobody can stop us. But this person to even mention something like that, this is the problem right now. It's people, they are divided. If people that want to vaccinate their children, they should vaccinate their children, and again, nobody should be against or for. It's their choice. If people that don't want to vaccinate their child, they don't. My child is vaccinated. She made that decision. Not me, she did it. I respect it, okay? But I'm here because for all, everybody I know in very different countries around Europe, okay, I know the data, and I know what's happening. I know what's happening right now in Portugal. I know what's happening in France. I know what's happening in Italy. I have friends. I know the people who's suffering from this vaccine, but if people they choose have the vaccine, it's okay. But for someone to come here and even, even, even be, think about something like that, discriminate people and children for the fact that they have, you know, we do what we need to do. For me, it's just, it just, it doesn't make sense. This is not what America is, and people should not be divided like this. Politics divides people, and this virus should be, people, should bring people together, not divide people. And this is why I'm here, to ask you guys to make sure you fight for our right to choose for our children. That's all it is. Masks, at this point, are unnecessary. We all had COVID one point or another. Children, they really don't, the data she, this lady she has, doesn't make sense, because all the data I see, children, they really don't get sense, because all the data I see, children, they really don't get sick. As, as, if they are sick children, they probably will have a problem if they have COVID. If they are healthy children, they don't get sick like that. And I have a lot of people that I know, again, examples. So, thank you.
Hi. My name is Kara Sarlo. I got here late, so I don't know if any other parents brought this up, but one of my concerns is, well, I think, a lot of people might feel this, that whatever you choose to do, it's nobody's business if someone gets vaccinated or doesn't get vaccinated. It's really nobody's business. And a big problem, like, no, I shouldn't have to tell the school, or my child shouldn't have to tell the school if they got the COVID. It's just, if it's not mandated, it's really nobody's business. My, like, if someone asks me if I'm vaccinated, it's not your business. I don't, I feel like I don't need to explain that, but a concern that's half of mine that I'm seeing, because everyone asks if you're vaccinated, your parents vaccinated, or you're like, are you getting vaccinated? Are you going to get vax, why aren't you getting vaccinated? Is now kids, in a way, being mean to one another. So for instance, I know my friend's daughter, a kid went up to her and asked, oh, are you getting vaccinated? And she said, no. And then the kid goes, well, are your parents vaccinated? And she says, no. And he goes, idiots. That's not okay. So I don't know, since, it's out of control. Vaccination is nobody's business. It's nobody's business. And now we have kids, which I'm sure you've seen, and I know it's happening in high schools, be, like, being mean to one another. I mean, the, we, I told my son, you know, if someone asks you, you need to tell them it's not your business, and basically leave it at that. These conversa, it's just, we shouldn't even be going there. So now that we have to deal with that, are you guys going to anyway have conversations with your teachers? I don't know on how to handle these kinds of situations, because I don't, we don't need to be dealing with this. And I even heard a few, you know, another teacher that had supposedly told all the kids to get vaccinated at one point. So I don't know if there's a way you guys are going to handle this new issue that we're going to have with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no further public participation, we will close that portion of the meeting now. On behalf of the entire Board, I want to thank everyone who came tonight to share your, your thoughts, your opinions, your feelings on these issues. As is clear from this room, and I can assure you is clear from emails and phone calls and conversations that every member of the Board has been having with members of our community, there are widely differing opinions on all of this. As we have been saying for the past 19 months, the goal of this Board is to educate your children and to keep everyone who comes into these building, children, faculty, and staff, safe. At the current moment, that requires that we comply with state rules regarding masking. To the extent that further public health guidance comes out from the state, we will comply with that and follow the law. Each of us took an oath to do, to do that, and none of us will break that oath. None of us will do anything that we thinks puts children, I'm sorry, excuse me. We gave you all, everyone here the opportunity to speak respectfully without being interrupted. Please do not interrupt the Board. Each of us will comply with the law, and we will continue to do what we believe is in the best interest of children and complying with the law. As we mentioned last week, and I know Dr. Wool will discuss further, we are working incredibly hard with surrounding districts in the Lower Hudson to try and get the state to provide us with guidance as to at what point we will be able to allow children back into school buildings unmasked. We want school to become as, even more normal than it already is. Children are in school every day. They're in classes with their teachers. They're participating in sports. They are performing on the stages. They are singing. They are playing musical instruments. We are working incredibly hard to keep all of school as normal and meaningful as possible. The Board is really grateful for Dr. Wool's leadership with the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents to really push the state to issue guidance that will help us. There is beyond that work being done through the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association to continue advocating for additional guidance. I know Dr. Wool will respond to some of the questions and issues posed with respect to vaccination rates. We are not at this point allowed to ask if students are vaccinated for COVID. We do have some information, just based on information coming from quarantines. He can flesh that out a little bit. So I think that's, that's, that's my, those are my updates with respect to COVID. I do want to share some updates with the community, because as I said, there are lots of really wonderful things happening in school buildings each and every day. I had the opportunity, and I know other members of the Board and Dr. Wool and members of the administrative team were, had the opportunity to see our first on-the-stage production. The, the, the one prior to that was actually the day before lockdown happened here in this auditorium, but the Harrison High School players put on a performance of Dear Chuck two weekends ago, which was just terrific. It was really wonderful to see our theater students performing. We, the Harrison High School Marching Band performed at the West Harrison Honor Roll Monument. They were honoring local veterans. Mayor Belmont was there officiating. There were a number of speakers from local veterans organizations, and there was a wonderful performance of Taps by Joshua Feldman, one of our high school students, and Fjord Data, another high school student. So thank you very much also to Mrs. Locher and Mr. Bream, who supported the marching band in their participation in that event. Enormous congratulations go to two of our fantastic high school teachers, Jen DeDino and Kim Grogan. They received the co-teaching pair of the year award for ENL and Classroom Content Teacher Pair. They received that at the 51st Annual New York State Teachers of English to Speakers of Other Languages. So congratulations to them. We pride ourselves on the ability to support every student, whether they come into the district as a fluent English speaker or not, whether they come in needing co-teaching or ENL support, and we're really excited and proud of them for being recognized. The Harrison High School Model Congress Team competed at the Princeton Model Congress Competition. We had, three of our high school students received Best Delegate Awards. Danny Topper, Remy Raben, and Jack Kelly, and Aiden Lefkowitz, Abby Roth, Schweda Nataguda, and Galley Blaustein received honorable mentions. Our Harrison Husky athletes continue to perform at just remarkable levels. Katrina Turelli earned a trip to the state tournament in cross-country. Sophia Bondikov also qualified for the New York State Swimming Championships in the, in actually three events, the 100 breaststroke, the 200 individual medley, and the 200 freestyle. The girls swim relay team broke records in the 400, 200 and 400 relays. They had set records earlier in the season and recently broke them. And congratulations to the team of Rico Suzuki, Talia Appelbaum, Katie Rube, and Sophia Bondikov. Johnny Antolino, a member of our varsity boys soccer team, was selected to all section. And Abi Trotta received all-section honorable mention and all-league for field hockey. So congratulations to all of them. We also just want to remind parents at the high school that the Winter Sports Parents Meeting will be held this coming Monday, November 22nd, at 6 o'clock. Let's see. We will also be offering, information will be provided to the community tomorrow. If there are parents who are interested in having their children vaccinated, there will be a vaccine clinic. We will be operating with, in conjunction with White Plains Hospital. And finally, I want to thank Michael Greenfield and Lisa Mulholland. They are, have been working tirelessly on our IB Primary Years Program application. We are anticipating that being submitted in the next day or two, I believe tomorrow. We're incredibly excited about this. It will continue the mission that we have had in this district to provide every child with the best education we can in the most supportive environment, and will really provide a direct through line for all students from kindergarten through 12th grade, whatever path they take. So we're really excited about that, and we'll look forward to some updates and presentations at coming meetings about how all of that work is proceeding at the elementary schools as we finish that. And Dr. Wool will give more updates, a bit of an update about this, but next Wednesday, November 25th, which is the day before Thanksgiving, there is an early dismissal. Information about that will be coming to parents. The first part of that information will be coming tomorrow. So that is it for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Mangan. Okay, everybody, thanks for being here. Some of you have not been here before, but I will say to you this unequivocally. I try really hard to listen to people, irrespective of what side of any issue you're on. I try really hard to listen. I'm particularly thankful, Jeff, for your comments, because this is a difficult time to try and figure out how we honor and protect. Honor the perspective of a parent and protect everybody's kids. I promised you a couple of things last time, and I also mentioned to you that I had been working on those things for endorsement of the 78 superintendents that happened three days after the Board meeting. Didn't happen three days after the Board meeting. It happened because I've been trying very hard to anticipate exactly where we have all landed in this time and place, which is an understandable anxiety on the part of some parents and their willingness to be, to place their kids in what they consider to be an uncertain circumstance. So we have not advocated, let me say it out loud in case people didn't hear it the first time, for anybody to be required to vaccinate their kids. On the other hand, there are many families that feel that it is an important first step to ensuring that their kids are protected and can be unfettered. The one place where you all seem to agree, and I certainly agree, is how do we find a place to normalize school and take masks off of children? So I would suggest that if you haven't had the chance to, go back and revisit the letter that has now been sent to the Governor. It's not anticipating being sent. And over dinner tonight, I received an email from 14 legislators who are going to support the position that I provided, but let me remind you of what it is. It is modeled somewhat on the Massachusetts model, which says that if enough people achieve vaccination status, that in fact, schools can have the option to remove masks if you want to keep them on. No one's going to prevent you from keeping them on. However, the decision about whether or not there is a certain number isn't mine, nor should it be mine. It should rest with people that are virologists and physicians, and that's where it will reside. And it is very difficult for me as a school superintendent, because my doctorate is in organizational leadership, not epidemiology or pediatric medicine, that I try as hard as I can to listen to everything that is out there. I pride myself on reading research, even though it's not my area of expertise. I want to understand every perspective, and I can assure you that whether you think I agree with you or I don't agree with you, I listen as hard as I can. And what I'm trying to do, I think somebody said, and whoever said it, thank you for saying it, how do we use this moment to unify our community instead of doing what the world is doing, which is tearing each other apart? So part of that is that we all, everybody in this room, needs to take a deep breath. And I said this last time, and I mean it. I mean it sincerely. I'm not preaching, but I think we would all benefit from giving each other a little bit of grace. Even if what you say isn't something that someone else agrees with, you don't need to attack that person on either side. We need to listen. So what am I proposing? I'm trying to propose a mid-ground that will allow us to all get where we'd like to be. Where would we like to be? We'd like our kids to be safe. We'd like them to take off their masks, and we'd all like to be comfortable with that decision. I have now put that responsibility where it squarely belongs, in the Governor and the New York State Department of Health's required guidance that they have yet to give me. So the first part of that is, at what point? You tell me, local authority. Is it infection rate? Is it vaccination rate? Is it a combination of both? When is it safe to take off the masks? The second thing I've asked for is something called test to stay, which means that in the current environment, if your child is exposed with a mask on right now, you don't have to be quarantined. But what would happen, I'm trying to always anticipate the next step, if masks were off and your child was exposed? I don't want to send kids to quarantine. I want the option to allow those children to be tested each morning before they enter school. If they're negative, they can go about their business and be in school. These are things that have worked in other places, and I think can work here. That still gives us the flexibility for some personal choice. I will tell you unequivocally, I would rely on my pediatrician's advice, not mine. The American Pediatric Association has already endorsed the use of these vaccines. You can accept that or reject it. That is your decision. If the vaccine is mandated, just like all the other vaccines are mandated, then we will be required to set that standard, and I will have a plan in place should that occur. I'm hoping that we can find a way over that hill without doing what I don't want us to do, which is tear each other to shreds, and the only people that are victimized in that are your children, no matter which side of the equation they're on. I know this is hard for people to believe, but the only basis for any choice I make is that. How can I do the very best I can every single day of my life, every time I draw breath, to make sure everybody's child feels comfortable, feels seen, feels valued in this school environment? And I would just ask you to stay with us as this journey continues. So we have put the ball where it appropriately belongs. Very quickly, I have seen legislators move to support that position. If we can get to that place, we'll at least have targets that will give us some indication of how to get the masks off. What is not helpful, I don't believe, for any of us, is to just try to find ways to diminish or demoralize one another. It does nothing, other than leave people diminished and demoralized. There's nobody in this room, I don't believe, that doesn't want the best for their kids. But there are certain things that we're all going to have to compromise on if we're going to get there. And I need your help. That's what I need. I need you to put down the rocks on both sides and to listen with an open mind, and together, maybe we can find a path forward that gives people what you're asking for. Masks off, safe kids, targets that we understand. I will tell you, my mom is, is in the process of dying, and she's in a nursing home in Connecticut, and I can't visit her. Because when I went on Saturday, she was fine, and when I went on Sunday, there were 23 active cases of COVID, and everybody in the place is vaccinated. 23 active cases of COVID, and everybody in the place is vaccinated. So I am optimistic in some ways, but I am sad in others. And I want you to all be sobered by this, because we can all be right or wrong. But my job is to keep your kids safe. Infection rates last week in Westchester County rose 26%. That's just the reality of it. What can we do to combat that? What can we do together to combat that? Because here's what no one wants. No one wants to see kids sent home again. That's the worst possible outcome. It's the worst possible outcome. So I want everybody here tonight to leave understanding that I hear you. And I'm trying to honor everybody's perspective and still hold the community together in a way that honors your children. Someone asked, you know, what is the vaccination status of our faculty and staff? It's over 95%. And to answer your question, that number would be included in whatever target would be set. But right now, we don't have the ability to ask anybody, we can ask, we can't compel you, to tell us whether or not your child is vaccinated. So it makes it a crapshoot. My proposal is that if you set targets and you know that a child in our community is vaccinated, let the school district know, so that we're all operating in a safe place. No child should be ostracized for either decision. No child. No child. That doesn't mean I wear the mask, I'm ostracized, or I don't wear the mask, I'm ostracized. It means no child. And if the adults don't behave that way, it sets a terrible example. Now tonight, some of you are refusing to wear a mask. It makes it awkward for me. I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm really not. I have a set of rules that I'm required to enforce. I'm doing my best to respect your right to make choices, but also understand that there are certain rules in public spaces that always apply. We stop at stop signs. We do various things that we're all required to do because we want to work as a community. This is a difficult time for us. We have choices to make collectively. If we care about each other, and I think we do, and we certainly care about our kids, and you know what? We should care about other people's kids. Let's take a pause, focus on the initiative that I've put in place, and let's focus our energy on trying to get the people who should have the expertise to guide us in a way that makes sense to more of you than it does tonight. So I'm proud of what we've accomplished. You know, somebody sent me a sample letter of one school district and said, why didn't you send your letter? Because I don't think one voice in the wilderness is what gets it done. 78 voices from the Lower Hudson Council, right? We're talking now about four counties of superintendents that have signed on to what I've just shared with you. In less than 48 hours, 16 legislators. If we can sensibly and reasonably ask for help to get to where we want to go, we're all going to be in a better place. And please, the one thing I say to kids all the time, and you know, kids are phenomenal. They never, ever let me down. Just give people the benefit of the doubt sometimes. Kids know how to get along. They are really good at it when you give them some direction and some time. And that's all I'm asking for, for each of us. I want to also speak to the question you raised about access to schools, Liz. I've tried to keep track of everything, hopefully I did. We're trying slowly. We're just going to announce in a couple of days that KJK Productions is going to come back, which is fully staffed by volunteer parents. We're going to start bringing you back into the schools. Unfortunately, it'll be limited this year. It's usually K-5, no, actually 2-5, right? It's going to be just 4 and 5, because they don't have enough staff at this point to accommodate more than those two grade levels. But parents will be fully involved and invited back into the schools, and we're in the process of trying to figure out how to reinvent and reimagine every possible activity that we can. You know, I'm a softie where kids are concerned. So Dr. Mulholland and I attended the first choral performance that has been live in this district since 2019. And I can tell you that Mrs. Test and her husband put a performance together of middle school choir and high school choir live onstage for the first time. And if you didn't see it, Andy, I think it's up two days? Oh, it can't go up because it's copyrighted. Copyrighted. So sorry, you missed it. It was great. Made me cry. And it closed with a song from Rent. But we're coming back, and let's remember that, and let's help our kids remember that. We're not going to fall back. We're not. We're moving forward. Sometimes the steps will move quickly, and sometimes they'll move slowly. But know that I feel your pain, but I'm mostly concerned about the well-being of your kids. And I need your help in caring for each other and your children collectively. So thank you for that. That's all I have to say on that tonight. I want to just jump to some other things that are, I think, critically important. There was a gentleman here last time who asked some really important questions, and I thanked him for that, on safety. In the midst of the COVID dynamic, I don't want you to think that we lose track of the possibility of our schools being unsafe places. So we are required by law once a year to do an emergency rapid dismissal. Couple of things you should be aware of if this is new to you. We do not allow elementary-age students to get on buses for a rapid dismissal. Why is that? Because in a real emergency, there might not be a parent on the other end to receive them. So we want you to practice. So what is essential for you to know? Make sure that all of the emergency contact information on your child's permanent record is updated. Because if you can't pick up your child that day, and you must show a photo ID on that day, because in a real emergency, we want to make sure everybody's taking their own child, the only other person that can pick up your child is somebody on that emergency contact list, and there are no exceptions to that rule, because we take the drill very seriously. There'll be detailed instructions. It's a half-day of school the day before Thanksgiving. That gives you a little head start on getaway day, which is usually helpful to families. But please take that drill very seriously. High school students have different parameters. There are no after-school activities that day, other than varsity athletic practice, which occurs after the drill is over and the kids come back. So stay tuned for that as well. What else did I want to tell you tonight? Dr. Ley, will you just go to the mic for me and give a quick update on the, what's coming up with some of the opportunities for working families who are struggling to find a vaccination clinic for your children? We are going to finally be able to do one through White Plains Hospital. We have about 800 people that have signed up so far.
Thanks, Dr. Wool. Yeah, we have been working to partner with the county and to be able to offer a vaccine clinic for parents who are interested. So it's entirely voluntary, and parents would have to give consent to participate. And we're fortunate in being able to establish a partnership with White Plains Hospital, so that we'll be able to host that clinic here in Harrison, at Harrison High School on the evening of Monday, November 22nd. And this is specifically for children in Harrison who are between the ages of five through 11. So this is the pediatric dose of the Pfizer vaccine. And an email will be sent to all parents tomorrow at noon with the opportunity to sign up. And the reason we do it that way is because we sent an early notification today to let parents know it was coming, and then they could plan if it was important to them and they wanted to make sure they were available to be able to put an appointment in for their child, they would have the opportunity to do that. We'll also host a subsequent clinic three weeks hence for the second dose. That's on December 13th, and the timing for that, incidentally, is that anybody that receives that second dose on December 13th, 10 days hence will be obviously December 23rd, and would be, any student that was vaccinated would be considered fully vaccinated just prior to that holiday. So we know we have a lot of parents that are interested in doing that. We surveyed parents initially, and as you said, received hundreds of parents that said if we offered it, they would take advantage of it and sign their kids up. So we're limited to just 200 doses on Monday, and that's partly because of what White Plains Hospital can handle in administering in a single event. But we've already done further outreach to them to see if they can make more doses available and another date available later in December, assuming we have additional parents that are interested.
Thank you, Dr. Ley. Is there anything else we need to know? No, I think that's about it, right, on that front?
I do believe.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your hard work on all of that, too. That's it?
Thank you very much.
You can, he'll come and see you. Dr. Ley, can you go talk to that lady? Thank you.
With that, we will move on to personnel agenda. Oh, sorry, I'm not on.
There you go.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wool. We will now take the personnel agenda. I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing no objection, item one, certificated personnel. A, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. B, extra compensation appointments, SED clearance received. C, extra compensation appointments, SED clearance submitted. D, corrected extra compensation appointments, SED clearance received. E, change of status. Roman numeral two, non-certificated personnel. A, resignation. B, resignation for the purpose of retirement. C, change of status. Roman numeral three, other. A, acknowledgement of student-teacher. B, approval of amended agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Moving on to the administrative report. I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing no objection, item one, acceptance of gift from the Blackbowed Giving Fund on behalf of New York Life and its donors. Item two, acceptance of gift from the Harrison Festival Japanese Committee. Item three, approval of extracurricular club. Item four, approval of extracurricular club. Item five, approval of extracurricular club. Item six, approval of CSC CPSC minutes. Item seven, approval of CSC CPSC recommendations. Item eight, approval of CSC CPSC annual reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the Blackbowed Giving Fund for their generous donation to Harrison Avenue School, and also thank the Harrison Festival Japanese Committee for their incredibly generous donation. They have been really wonderful partners of the school and the community. So thank you. Thank you to them. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Item, moving on to the finance report. I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, item one, 2021-22 appropriation transfers. Item two, treasurer's report, October 2021. Item three, quarterly report for the extra classroom activity funds. Do I have a motion to approve the finance report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. That concludes the November 17 regular business meeting. The next regular business meeting will be December 15, 2021, here at the Lewis M. Klein Middle School. On behalf of the entire board, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and safe travels to those who will be traveling. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're closed. Thank you very much.